Good afternoon, everybody. And welcome to the regular session of the Orange County Legislature dated Thursday, August 4th, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order and remind all of you that are in the room to police silence your cellphones and any electronic devices that you may have. And at this point, I would ask you to stand for a moment of silence and a pledge to the flag. And please remain standing because we have a very special guest here this afternoon. The Newburgh Free Academy Madrigals singing group will be singing the National Anthem.
I plead with the allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone. Ready? Here we go.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I am greatly --
Please be seated.
I'm greatly appreciative of my alma mater, the Newburgh Free Academy, being here today. Newburgh Free Academy and Newburgh Large City School District actually serves three municipalities, so there are other legislators here that represent the district. I could not be more pleased. I would truly like to thank Julian Cassi, who's the former retired director of the Madrigals, correct? Thank you for being here today and leading this ensemble. We do have a few certificates for you all, and we'd like to present that at this time. No, they're good. So this is presented to the Newburgh Free Academy Madrigals in general, and this is a certificate of appreciation to the Newburgh Free Academy Madrigals, signed by Catherine Ebbenele, chairwoman of the Orange County Legislature. And I'd like to present this to you for presence to the academy. Thank you so much. Forgive me if I get your names wrong, but correct me, please. This is a certificate of appreciation presented to Gerlin Cor. Thank you so much for your assistance today. Manny Tejeda, who sang for us last year. Welcome back, Manny. Thank you very much. Esther Almeida. Thank you. Tice Zosaya. Thank you. Julian Lamar. Thank you, Julian. John O'Sullivan. Thank you, John. My pleasure. And I believe that's all. Hang on, we got two more. Megan Torres, who was unable to be with us today, and Madison Vannetti. Okay, also works. So thank you all very much. Three of them are leaving for -- have graduated, right, and going on. So I'd like to wish you well in your endeavors, and thank you for being here representing Newburgh Free Academy at the Orange County Legislature.
Thank you, Legislator Menuda, and thank you to the great choral group that was with us this afternoon. You're very talented young people, and we're so glad you could join us this afternoon. I appreciate that. I would just like to note that we do have a special proclamation, and since we didn't have the opportunity to have someone here to receive it, I'm just going to recognize it from the chair here, and it's recognizing August 6th, 2022, as Bullstone House Day. Many of the people here in Orange County are very familiar with the Bull family, Amy Bullchrist. And it was interesting, when I was having a discussion with our caucus the other evening, it realized that probably each and every one of us, and we may not even know it, have somebody that we know that's related to the Bull family. And actually, right here in this building, our county clerk, Kelly Escue, is a descendant of the Bull family. So we wanted to take time out of this legislative session to recognize the Bullstone House that was built by Sarah Wells and William Bill back in -- they were married in 1718, and they built this house with their own hands 300 years ago. So we just wanted to take time out of our session to recognize their achievements and their history here in Orange County. Thank you all very much. At this point, I would ask for roll call. Fagion.
Here.
Paduk.
Here.
Aimo.
Yep.
Anagnostakis.
Benton.
Here.
Bresch.
Here.
Chaney.
Here.
Ellers.
Here.
Hines.
Here.
Luhon.
Present.
Menuda.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Ramos.
Present.
Ruskovich.
Here.
Sassy.
Here.
Sierra.
Here.
Stiganga.
Here.
Sutherland.
Here.
Tortell.
Here.
Tui.
Here.
Benelli.
Present.
Nineteen present, two absent.
I don't -- there wasn't anyone that signed up for public participation on agenda items, correct? Then, Majority Leader Fagion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes of the March 3rd and March 24th, 2022 meetings.
Do I have a second? Thank you. All in favor? Are there any consents?
Madam Chair, please accept items 13 through 16 on today's agenda as consent items.
Okay, if there are no objections, these items will be accepted onto the agenda. Again, Mr. Fagion.
Madam Chair, I move to vote collectively on consent items number 13 through 16.
If there are no objections, these items will be voted on collectively. So I think we can get started. Report A is received and filed. Resolution Number One. Legislators Ruskovich, O'Donnell, Benton, and Hines, with legislators Luhon, Tortell, and Ramos as cosponsors. Resolution adopting a budget for the Orange County Community College for fiscal year 2022 to 2023 and providing for the raising of taxes required by such budget pursuant to Section 6304 of the Education Law and Article Four of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Right, this is -- Legislator Luhon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So last session for education, I saw at length of the conversation about the SUNY Orange's budget, and a lot of the conversation created a lot of concern for me. We've seen this college really navigate out of a really, really tough situation, particularly in the midst of a pandemic. We've seen enrollment go down, but we've seen the leadership has really stepped up to the plate, often navigating again really challenging times and also being very flexible. Personally, I feel that the college made a very reasonable request, making, you know, asking what they only needed. And quite frankly, I was disappointed to see that we were going to be lowering some of the money that they were requesting for. I think that one of the things that most concerns me is this money was not intended to, you know, give raises to anyone. It was aimed to make sure that they didn't have to raise tuition for students, which also makes sure that we don't lose students. It wasn't aimed to -- you know, I heard many legislators talk about the need to create new programs, and that's excellent. That's wonderful. But we do that by making sure that we have enrollment numbers up. And the proposal that they put forward was one that aimed precisely to do that. I personally would love to see the original resolution put forward, and I'd like to entertain that as a conversation if possible. Madam Chair.
The resolution before you is what came out of committee. Are you proposing to amend this?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And what are you proposing to amend it to?
So I'd like to go back to the original resolution that was put forward at ENE, which would have added the other $300,000 that was taken out in that committee. Madam Chair.
I don't have that resolution. Do you? So where do we -- please. Before we can go any further, is anybody desired to second that motion made by Legislator Luhon? I'll second. I'm sorry. Ramos. Thank you. Discussion or comments on the amendment? Legislator Menuda, did I see your hand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Whereas I appreciate the intent of the change, there's obviously a lot of things that were discussed in committee that went into this final resolution. That being said, I think that information should have been vetted through the legislators that are proposing this at this time. Had they been there and seen all of that, then they would understand why the resolution is the way that it is.
Thank you. Any other comments? Legislator Ramos.
Yeah, so I was there, as I'm a member of ENE, and I have a few things to add. So first and foremost, the issue that we're seeing with enrollment at the college is a nationwide issue in higher education at this moment. So I think that as a legislature, we need to have a reckoning with the fact that we can't -- and it goes both ways, right? I think, because this is also on behalf of the college, but we have to shift how things have been projected and how we've been looking at revenue for the college. Times have -- they're simply changing. Generations now are looking at higher education differently, and Orange County Community College, this is not an exclusive issue. In fact, community colleges are facing the brunt of this nationwide enrollment issue in higher education. And if we are asking the college to be innovative, innovation requires investment. Everything that we're saying, develop new programs, go online, these things require investment. So I don't think it's the time to divest from the college. I think it's time to actually continue to invest in the college so that these concerns that have been raised, that are very valid concerns, not just in committee, but through other discussions with other legislators, that they be addressed. With that said, I do think that there is an opportunity from college administration to have a more continuous conversation, and perhaps, and this is just a suggestion, that they come to ENE on a more frequent basis so that we have a better understanding of what the needs are and that we can have reciprocal dialogue and conversation so that next year we're not here, where perhaps there's not a good sense or understanding of the request. However, education is one of the things that I think we can all agree on that needs and deserves investment. And I know myself and many other legislators are products of SUNY Orange, so we can't negate the impact that it has on our communities throughout the county. And I know that there's, again, a lot that has been said in terms of suggestions for different programs, but I think that for those of us who are not content experts in higher education, we should listen to those who are doing the work so that we can collectively find common ground from us through the legislature and a budgetary perspective, and then the college administrators who are on the ground doing the work. So with that said, I support that, support going back to the original requested amount, and I think that this is just a moment for us to just be open to more ongoing dialogue. But again, just having that reckoning that what the college is facing is a nationwide issue, and I'll just repeat that, innovation requires investment.
Thank you, Legislator Ramos. Is there anyone else? Legislator O'Donnell.
Thank you, Chairwoman Benelli. So just to go back in time to the meeting, the $880,000, I think that was the request, right? And we ended up with $571,000, so you can fine tune Legislator Luhon's amendment to specifically say $880,000 increase. The vote out of the ENE Committee that day was four in favor of $880,000. Unfortunately, three members of the committee were absent, and we needed five votes. Legislator Chaney was in affirmative. Thank you. Legislator Ruskovich was in the affirmative. Thank you. I was in the affirmative. I spoke at length in support of the college. And Legislator Ramos was in favor. The only no vote was the chair, the committee legislator, Menuda. It then didn't pass, and it passed -- didn't pass in Ways and Means either, so here we are today. But this is the process of the legislature. If you're not on the committee or any committee, you always have the opportunity to address it and try to make amendments at the full legislative. So this is normal procedure. So I'll be supporting it today. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you. Just to clarify, Legislator O'Donnell, Mr. Aimo is not on either one of those committees.
I didn't say Mr. Aimo.
I thought you said Aimo. I'm sorry.
That's that Bronx accent. Sorry.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Oh, sorry. Legislator Sutherland, it was a yes. Sorry.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other comments? Legislator Luhon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, to Legislator O'Donnell's point, our role is very much to speak to our colleagues and speak to our legislators, speak to our department heads, to do our due diligence, and that's exactly what has happened since that committee. Again, this is a -- I happen to have SUNY Orange in my district, as many of you also do, and SUNY Orange is countywide. It impacts every single one of us. It does amazing work for every single one of our constituents. It is a part of the roadmap of Orange County. It is our future. Again, you know, we have seen how this college's leadership has time and time again navigated really troubling waters, and they've done it with great difficulty at times because it's not easy to have to let go of some amazing staff. It's not easy to encourage or find ways to see if there's ways that people might want to incentivize them to retire early. And they've done that when we've asked them of it. When we've asked them to be more innovative, they've been more innovative. The workforce development program that they have been ushering in for the last couple of years has been everything, innovative. And so we are right now, as Legislator Ramos said so perfectly, is we're seeing that colleges across the country, across the country, are struggling, and we're seeing less and less people that are graduating, which causes a greater burden. And so we are here facing a very big dilemma. How do we make sure that we can prepare the students for our future, ensure that our future are prepared, that they are going to have the jobs of not yesterday, but of in the next couple of years? And they've done that, talking about public health jobs, hospitality jobs, trade jobs. They have led the way. They have done the research that we have encouraged them to do, and what they came before us is with a budget. A budget that says, we're not trying to -- we're not reaching for the stars. We're just trying to navigate this ship to make sure that we are all whole at the end of it. And the funds that they have available, that some legislators have talked about during that meeting, those funds, they're really accounted for. They're to make sure that the ship stays afloat. And so again, I encourage every single one of you, I know that you all care about this college, and you care about its future, so I encourage you all to vote in the affirmative for this resolution I'm proposing today.
Thank you, Legislator Luhon.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Majority Leader Paduk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think all of us here support education. However, the discussion in the committee, which I brought up, was that the county also has $2.6 million in ARPA funds from the federal government that they want to put in surplus. They have over $3 million worth of vacant positions that are funded but not filled. I made the suggestion that the extra $880,000 that they're requesting be manipulated through those kinds of money, which so the taxpayers don't have to re-support them. Look, I support education. I talked about innovative ways to raise money to help support the college. We're hoping that we hear that next year, but let's just keep in mind, we've been giving them $1 million the last three years at a flat rate. Every time the county gives the college money at that amount, we can't reduce it. So if we add $880,000 to it, next year it'll be $1.880,000. Will they have some innovative programs to help reduce the cost to the taxpayers? Not sure, but I'd love to see it. And the other fact is that we already pay $6 million in capital projects for the college. So you know what? If there's ways to save taxpayers' money, and it seems to me like there was, that's why the discussion came up and reduced it to what the real need was, not the additional funding that they requested. So I wouldn't be supporting these amendments, but I would support the original resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislator Ruskovich, followed by Legislator Hines.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I would like to say, I know I was supportive of the $880,000 in committee. During that committee meeting, we did have a very thorough discussion of the OAC budget, and the college walked away from that meeting with the resolution that came out of committee. The budget that Mr. Martland presented earlier is a very good budget. I think they're going to do well with it. I know, you know, increasing the appropriations is always a little bit of a double-edged sword because it does create the funding floor for the following year. And as far as tuition goes, you know, whatever action we take today is not going to affect tuition because our tuition was set back in January, so that's not going to affect this year's students. I would also like to agree with Legislator Ramos about having more continued dialogue. That's something I push for as Chair of ENE, to start this process sooner so that, you know, we can work together more cooperatively with the college and with the county execs' office so that we have a better understanding of where they are when we come into the budget process. But in terms of this budget, I think that what came out of committee is a good, solid budget, and I think they're going to work well with it, and I know that we're going to continue to support the college going forward. So, thank you.
Legislator Hines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I sat on Ways and Means, and then I sponsored this resolution, which increases the OAC budget by half a million dollars, by the way. So the term I heard "divest" is not accurate with respect to this budget. We're increasing it, and as Legislator Ruskovich pointed out, that's in perpetuity. That half million, they get forever now because we never reduce the contribution. Also, matter of fact, Mr. Martland, in his presentation, thanked us for our support and our continued support, and he indicated that other institutions don't have that kind of relationship with their legislature. This is a compromise. In other words, when we formulate budgets, you have your wants and you have your needs. This supplies their needs, not necessarily their wants. And I don't think the college is significantly disappointed with this because the funding source is going up and the number of students is going down. That's really where the issue is. As Legislator Ruskovich pointed out, the tuition was set before we ever looked at this. So to say that the tuition is reflective of our contribution right now, not so. The tuition was set before we even looked at this budget. The other obvious issue is the state elected officials. That's where the problem sits. It's supposed to be a third tuition, a third county, and a third state. The state's contribution, and I think I'm pretty accurate with this, is about 20%. So therein lies the problem, and therein lies the issue with the raised tuition. It's the state officials, not the county. Our contribution to the college, in my 13th year here, has always been significant, and every legislator here has always taken a very strong interest in the college. To suggest otherwise is disingenuous. So I think this was a compromise, and this is -- we should keep it the way it came out of committee because it was well-vetted and well-discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislator Ruskovich, did you want to add something?
Yeah, one thing I left out unintentionally, I did want to recognize the board of trustees and the administration of the college. They are faced with some very significant challenges, but they work very hard, very diligently. They've got some great people there, and that's why I'm so confident in the budget that they have and where they're going moving forward.
Well said, Legislator Ruskovich. Legislator Tortell.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just need a point of clarification, please. The original ask was an additional $880,000. It was reduced to $571,000 in Ways and Means, which is a difference of $309,000 from the original $880,000, but under what the way I heard Legislator Luhon proposed, it was putting another $800,000 under. Are you talking about just -- okay, so I just wanted to make sure it was a point of clarification because I do quite different --
It's in perpetuity. Thank you. Thank you. All right. If there's no other comments, we're going to call the question on the amendment that is -- that was proposed. So roll call, please. Fagion.
No.
Do you need to clarify?
Yeah.
Okay. That's you want to clarify exactly what the amendment is doing.
So if I am correct, I'll defer to Legislator Luhon, but the motion was to amend the resolution we have before us, which provides a county share of $571,586 to increase that amount to the original request amounted, which was $876,434. Is that correct?
Roll call, please. Fagion.
No.
Paduk.
No.
Aimo. Benton.
No.
Bresch. Chaney.
No.
Ellers.
No.
Hines.
No.
Luhon.
Hi.
Menuda.
No.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Ruskovich.
No.
Sassy.
No.
Stiganga.
No.
Sutherland.
No.
Tortell.
Yes.
Tui.
No.
Benelli.
No.
Motion fails. Fifteen noes. Motion fails. Thank you. All right, let's go back to the original resolution that's on our agenda, and I -- yes, Majority Leader.
To the original resolution. Thank you, Madam Chair. This body has supported the community college for years, longer than I've been here. The college has been a partner with the county for years. The county has always been there to support the college. The college came to us this year, and in good faith, as Mr. Hines said, we came up with a proposal that works for the college, that works for the taxpayers here in the county. I spoke to Dr. Young briefly before the meeting today, and I'm going to work with her. I call on the leadership of the college, the leadership of this county, but more importantly, the leadership at the state level to come and form a summit together with all of us between now and next year, and let's work together. Mr. Hines said it best. The state has been short, not just short, blatantly short on their end of the bargain. It's time that we hold Albany accountable when we are working hard here as county taxpayers. Our board of trustees and the administration in the county, the community college, are working very hard and diligently, and it is the state that is shortchanging not just the taxpayers, but also the students. This resolution here before us is a strong resolution that shows our continued commitment to the community college, to the SUNY system, and then I ask all my colleagues to not only support this, but vote unanimously in its favor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? Legislator O'Donnell.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So I want to thank the trustees and the college for the intense work you did on preparing this budget. I know for a fact from speaking to many of you, you would not have asked for $876,000 and change unless you needed it, all right? So this was a compromise, and trying to say now that you're all in agreement with it, I know you would not have asked for one penny more than you needed. You're all very intelligent people up at the college. Thank God for that. You're doing a great job with our students, and God bless the work you do, but I know for a fact you needed that money. You wouldn't have asked us for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislator Luhon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to echo the same sentiments as my colleague, Legislator O'Donnell. You know, you
O'Donnell. You know, you have all showed immense leadership, and we are truly grateful to all of you for the hard work that you do, year after year, and especially navigating such a hard, hard, difficult time in our history as a country and as, you know, as the world. Again, you know, I do feel that this resolution falls a bit short. Again, legislator O'Donnell said it perfectly. I don't think that you are going to ask for a penny more than you need. And I do feel that, you know, we sometimes put some of our departments and our, particularly here in this case, the college, in a tough position, you know, asking more with less. Be innovative, be great at marketing, be great at, you know, expanding your programs, do virtual and find new programs. They do that. And here was an opportunity for us to not wait six months or a year, for them to be able to market and do the very things that we'd like them to do. We're going to have to wait. And I applaud the idea of the Majority Leader about the summit. I think that is a fantastic idea. I think it's excellent to continue to have more communication with the college. And I also will say, we did a resolution out of here, the legislature's about two years ago, and I believe every single one of us supported that the state should give more money. It was unanimous. It was Democrats and Republicans. We all sat together and said, we absolutely agree that the state needs to do more. That being said, it is our responsibility here to see what they ask for. And that's what they asked for. They asked for that amount of money to see the ship. And so I will be supporting this resolution despite the fact that I feel that it is far below what we could be doing. But again, I applaud the college and everyone and all of your work that you do. Thank you so much.
Legislator Ryskevich?
Yeah, in terms of the state funding model, it's pretty clear that their model is hopefully outdated, needs to be updated. I know the, our community college, as well as community colleges around the state, have been working hard to work with our state legislators in lobbying efforts to get that model changed. I know our college, every year, meets with our local representative, or state representatives, and always invite legislators to attend. I know myself, legislator Cheney, and a few others have participated in that. I would encourage all of us to get more involved there, because that's one way we can help the college in getting that state funding model changed.
Thank you. Legislator Menuda?
Thank you, Chairwoman. As a Loma del Rey County community college, I cannot tell you what an opportunity it was for me to be able to go there, as well as many of our other legislators. I think they've done an excellent job in what they do for the community. As a community college, I should also be supporting the types of industry that are in our community. Agriculture, for one. Agriculture is huge within Orange County. I'd like to see more programs like that. You know, we need to start meeting the needs of where we are today in education, as well as how we get to the student today. We had those robust discussions during our meetings. I am fully in support of education. This, however, is a business decision, and we have to be cognizant of that. You're looking at a downward trend where we're funding another more than one-half million dollars in perpetuity. We pick up more than our share as a county for the college in both state funding, which I understand from the meeting, the state actually picks up their third as FTE once it is actually counted, if I understood that correctly. Going forward, we are in support of the college and their needs. I would like to see these things brought to fruition in a business plan put forth that meets the needs of the downward trend, as well as that of the people. The other thing we provide to the college is resources as far as where they reside. So each one of the buildings that they're in, we provide a tremendous amount. So to say that right sizing this budget is disingenuous is not the case. We are there to do the work of the people and ensure that our taxpayers reap the benefits of what their value of the dollar is. So I am fully in support of this resolution moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Fagio?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo?
Yes.
Benton?
No.
Breschah?
No.
Cheney?
No.
Ellers?
No.
Hines?
No.
Luhon?
Hi.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ramos?
Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga?
Sutherland?
Tortell? Tui? Benelli?
19 ayes. Number two, please. Legislators O'Donnell, Paduk, and Benton, with all Republicans, and legislators Tortell and Ramos as cosponsors. Resolution confirming the appointment of Carrie L. Gallagher as Commissioner of Finance for Orange County by the county executive pursuant to Section 5.01 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? I would just like to say that I have had the opportunity for quite a number of years to work with Kelly Gallagher in her various different positions. She was currently the deputy, and moving into the position of Commissioner of Finance, I certainly agree with the county executive's appointment, and I applaud his appointment bringing her forth to us. And I totally agree, and I wish her all the best, and I look forward to continuing working with her. All right, roll call, please. Fagio?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo?
No.
Benton?
No.
Breschah?
No.
Cheney?
No.
Ellers?
No.
Hines?
No.
Luhon?
No.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ramos?
Ryskevich?
Sassy?
Stiganga?
Sutherland?
Tortell?
Tui?
Benelli?
19 ayes. Number three, please. Congratulations, Carrie. Number three. Legislators Menuda, O'Donnell, Tortell, and Tui, with all Republicans and legislator Ramos as cosponsors. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create senior public health educator and public health educator at the Orange County Office for the Aging.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call. Fagio?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo?
No.
Benton?
No.
Breschah?
No.
Cheney?
No.
Ellers?
No.
Hines?
No.
Luhon?
No.
Menuda?
No.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ramos?
Ryskevich?
Sassy?
Stiganga?
Sutherland?
Tortell?
Tui?
Benelli?
19 ayes. Number four, and this will be a voice vote. Legislators Cheney and Hines, with all Republicans, legislators Luhon, Tortell, and Ramos as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Planning to accept and appropriate funds as a subcontractor to the Orange County Department of Health for the Healthy Orange Schools and Communities Program.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number five, please. Legislators Sutherland and Luhon, with all Republicans and legislators Tortell and Ramos as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Health to accept and appropriate grant funds from the New York State Department of Health for the Creating Healthy Schools and Communities Grant.
Second.
All right, this is a voice vote, so any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Number six, please, and this is also a voice vote. Legislators Sutherland and Tortell, with all Republicans and legislators Luhon and Ramos as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Health to accept and appropriate grant funds from the New York State Department of Health for the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Number seven, please. Legislators Luhon, Tortell, and Benton, with all, with legislator Ramos as a cosponsor. Resolution to authorize the Orange County Department of Mental Health to transfer funds from an advanced account to an operating budget.
Second.
Questions, comments? This is a roll call vote. Correct. Fagio?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo?
No.
Benton?
No.
Breschah?
No.
Cheney?
No.
Ellers?
No.
Hines?
No.
Luhon?
No.
Menuda?
No.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ramos?
Ryskevich?
Sassy?
Stiganga?
Sutherland?
Tortell?
Tui?
Benelli?
19 ayes. Number eight, please. Legislators Tui and Ryskevich, with legislators Tortell and Ramos as cosponsors. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature assuming lead agency status under the State Environment Equality Review Act, SECRA, with respect to the construction of the Orange County Medical Examiner's Facility in the town of Goshen, classifying the action as an unlisted action and determining that the action will not have any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Number nine, please. Legislators Luhon, Tortell, Ryskevich, Benton, Breschah, with all Republicans and legislator Ramos as cosponsors. Resolution to authorize the Orange County Department of Health to increase the capital projects budget for the medical examiner facility.
Second.
Second.
Legislator O'Donnell?
Thank you, Chairwoman. So I've been talking about this building for, I don't know, a number of years now. It started out at a $5 million building, and now is $23 million, I believe. So I won't be supporting this, because every time I've mentioned the building, not once have the medical examiner's office come back with a smaller footprint for this building. If you look at their budget, they have eight authorized positions, three of which are vacant. So we have five authorized county positions in a building that's going to cost $23 million. This building right here that we have the pleasure of sitting in today costs less than $75 million. Just last week, the county execs office has now proposed, which you'll see later in the agenda, building, a new building for the Health Department with an estimated cost of, again, $23 million. All right? I'm all in favor of spending the federal government's money, because a lot of this has to be spent by 2024, or you'll lose it. But if they're looking at a new Health Department building, then the smart thing to do, seeing as the medical examiner's office is part of the Health Department, is to combine those two buildings. Right off the bat, you have 50% savings in security, 50% savings with the receptionist, and like I said, the medical examiner building should no way cost the county taxpayers $23 million. So what I'd like the legislator to do, as well as the county execs office, now that we're looking at a new Health Department building, to try to combine those buildings into one footprint, whether it's at the current space allocated up by the 911 Center for the Medical Examiner's Building, or directly across the street, which is the location that was requested for the new Health Department building. But there is millions and millions of dollars to be saved for the taxpayers with those two buildings being combined. So I'll be a no, consistent with my past votes on the medical examiner's building. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Minority Leader Paduk?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I agree with Mr. O'Donnell 100%. I have voted for the medical examiner's building in committee. However, with this recently coming up about looking to spend $100,000 to see if these parcels next to us are compatible to whatever, I think that's a great idea. So maybe I'm not going to support this today either, and maybe we could put our money to work in a better way. If we combine the building, save $14 million, save half percent in security, et cetera, et cetera. That's the kind of things we're supposed to do as legislators, in my opinion. So I won't be supporting this today either. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislator Aimo?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm going to support this, but I want to remind the group that we, in the first resolution, the number eight before us, is that we just passed the resolution on the secret process. And through that process, we're going to really begin to divine, define what kind of building we really need, because that's what the public hearings are all about. That's what the AFS and the FES was all about. And so it may be more, it may be less. I think this is a movement of parking some money, so in case we need it. So I'm going to support it. But I want to remind everybody that we're going to hear a lot in the secret process about what may need to be added to this building to increase it or decrease it.
Thank you. Legislator Cheney?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I'd like to go back to 2019, December, when we got the first report from a needs assessment. That report suggested that the cost of the building would be $11.6 million, and it would be 13,100 square feet. After the process began to evolve, a new consultant was brought, was brought on board to do the design work and work closely with the medical examiner's office. That resulted in an increase in size of the building from 13,100 to 18,200 square feet. So it's, begins to become obvious where the, where the costs have increased and why they've increased. The, the building that is currently under design, and the design is probably 99% done, the county's looking at the, at the design before it will be put out to bid. That design is anticipated to not be overgrown, outgrown in at least 20 years. So whether that was included in the original 13,000 square feet or not, unclear, but that's part of the reason why there was increase in the square footage. Also, COVID-related construction materials costs, as we all know, have gone up, those have increased, and that's also contributed to the increase in costs that's taken us to the 21.3 million that we sit with today. As far as putting this off, we've been putting this off, we've been kicking the can down the road for a lot of years, more than I'd like to admit. And, and the facility that we have now is woefully inadequate. It's not respectful of the families that need to go there at a very, very critical and uncomfortable point of their life. And so I think that waiting another five years to combine it with a possible Health Department office is not the correct step to take. And one more thing relative to that is that I would suggest, and I'm not an expert on medical examiner's offices, but it seems to me that that type of a facility is incompatible in a large office building. You have a totally different operation with that, and that operation works at different times of the day and requires special ventilation systems. So that's, you know, another reason, one of the reasons it's at the 911 center area on Six and a Half Station Road is because of the security aspect. And being close to the sheriff's office has added a level of comfort above what any other security might provide. So with that, basically, I'm asking my fellow legislators to support this additional funding.
Thank you. Legislator O'Donnell?
Thank you, Chairwoman. So I'm not sure it would take five years to build a new Health Department building, but like you said, you're not the expert in medical examiner's buildings. I'm not the expert here either. But five years seems like a long time. It still does not take away from our fiscal responsibility to save the county taxpayers' money anytime we can. And just to give you a little history on how we got to this point is when we had the new hospital being built, the morgue was supposed to go there. The people that built the hospital on purpose built their morgue so small, it was unusable for all purposes. And in fact, I was the deputy county exec at the time, went back and forth with them. Their solution was to offer us $10,000 because they built it so small, which was unbelievable that they would even say that. Then they built a second building right next to it, up at Garnet, where they could again put the morgue up there. And this is the first I'm ever hearing about the security, and that's why it was built near the 911 center. That certainly didn't come up any discussions I've had, that it was proposed to be next to the sheriff's department for security. I don't know what type of security they need there. But again, with the new building for the Health Department, this can be done in quicker fashion than five years, and certainly save millions and millions of dollars. And you're right, this current situation is not good, but it's not our fault that it hasn't been done yet. Right? We proposed it a long time ago. All right? And it went, like I said, from $5 million to now $23 million. So again, I won't be
This project was cited, was one of multiple sites. I actually looked for another site for this project. And it was due to the fact for the security of the building because of the type of use that it is. Placing it at the 911 center was ideal. We're not increasing a tremendous amount of footprint. We're not increasing a tremendous amount of parking. You're also looking at some increased costs because we have a geothermal system. Rather than spending money, little money now and more money later, we are all in the green era, right? So you have to spend that money upfront in order to gain the benefit at the end. And that's what the geothermal system does. As far as the size and how many people are working at it, it's not the number of people that are working at it or how many units. It's the number of people that we are going to need to occupy the morgue over the course of time. And this building has been designed for at least 20 years worth of that incurring potential. So I am in full support of this. It's not really the number that I wanted, but we were also in COVID times. This does happen to be something that is in my background. And it would be great to combine it with another project. Perhaps you're going to save some money, but does it fit? And I think, I want to thank legislator Cheney for his comments because it doesn't fit. You're dealing with a morgue. You're dealing with odors and smells. You're dealing with the public who is going to come to a building to identify one of their loved ones. How is that best handled? In a public building or a more private setting? There's a lot of information and a lot of detail that went into all of this design. Again, I've been part of it. Legislator Cheney's been part of it. These are our backgrounds. I'm in full support of this going forward, looking forward to another discussion on a potential solution for the health department, where they're at. You know, there's some ADA issues that are going on there potentially. It's not the brand newest of buildings, but you know, that's another discussion. If that was the case, this should have been brought up many, many years ago, not at this point where we spent hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars already with consultants and design and time, the time of our own people on the project. So, you know, let's not fall short of what's been spent already by trying to think that we're going to pair something up later on. It's been done. It's been established. We are ready to roll. I really would appreciate if all of my legislators would support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to take roll call, please. Fagio?
Yes.
Paduk?
No.
Emo? Benton? Breschah? Ellers? I'm sorry. I apologize. Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ryskevich?
Yes.
Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui?
Yes.
Benelli? Yes. Seventeen eyes. Two no's.
Okay, the next two resolutions, number 10 and number 11, are basically the same resolution. One passed physical services and one passed ways and means. The one at ways and means is actually the correct dollar figure. So I'm going to call on legislator Menuda as far as withdrawing item number 10.
Thank you, Chairwoman Benelli. At this time, I would like to request item number 10 on the agenda, which is the resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Parks and Recreation for the installation of a fence along Quarry Road in the town of Goshen in the amount of $14,000 be withdrawn.
Thank you, Mr. Benton. There are no objections. Item number 10 is now withdrawn, which moves us to item number 11. Legislators Benton, Paduk, and Cheney, resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Parks and Recreation for the installation of a fence along Quarry Road in the town of Goshen.
Second.
Questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please. Fagio?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? Nineteen eyes. Number 12, please. Legislators Benton and Totell, resolution authorizing the private sale and conveyance of certain county-owned lands acquired by reason of a failure to redeem said lands from a tax sale to Orange County pursuant to Section 10184 of the Real Property Tax Law and Orange County amended local law, number two of 2010.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please. Fagio?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? Nineteen eyes. Okay, numbers 13 through 16 here again are being voted on collectively. These are correction of errors. Any comments on any one of them? Okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Number 17, and this is a two-thirds roll call vote. Legislators Menuda, Benton, and Breschah with legislator Luhon as a cosponsor. Bond resolution dated August 4, 2022. Bond resolution of the county of Orange, New York, authorizing the construction of a rotating beacon at the Orange County Airport, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $289,000. Appropriating set amount therefore, including $260,100, expected to be received from the United States of America, and $14,450 expected to be received from the state of New York, and authorizing the issuance of $14,450 bonds of the county to finance the balance of said appropriation.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please. Fagio?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? Nineteen eyes. Moving to number 18, and this again is a two-thirds roll call vote since it's a bond resolution. Legislators Tui, Menuda, Benton, Cheney with legislator Luhon as a cosponsor. Bond resolution dated August 4, 2022. Bond resolution of the county of Orange, New York, authorizing additional financing for the cost of the installation of a sewer system at the county airport, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $1,100,000. Appropriating $500,000 therefore, in addition to amounts previously appropriated, and authorizing the issuance of 500,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please. Fagio?
Yes.
Paduk? Emo? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? I'm sorry. Is that Breschah abstaining? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? Eighteen eyes, one abstention. Right, number 19, here again, it's a bond resolution needing two-thirds vote. Legislators Menuda, Benton, and Totell, bond resolution dated August 4, 2022. Bond resolution of the county of Orange, New York, authorizing paving improvements at the county airport, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $50,000. Appropriating set amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of 50,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please. Fagio?
Yes.
Paduk? Emo? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? Nineteen eyes. Number 20, please. Legislators Breschah, Menuda, Benton, and Hines, resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Public Works Airport for the purchase of fuel at the Orange County Airport.
Second.
All right, this is a voice vote. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. Number 21. Legislators Menuda, Tui, Benton, and Hines, resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Public Works Airport for airfield equipment at the Orange County Airport.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Number 22, please. Legislators Paduk and Breschah, resolution of the Orange County Legislature giving notice of intent to assume lead agency status under State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRA, with respect to the removal of Hubbard Bridge in the town of Walk Hill, and making a preliminary determination that this project will be classified as an unlisted action.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carried. Number 23, please. Legislators Menuda, Paduk, Benton with all Republicans as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Public Works for the removal of Hubbard Bridge pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
The following next few, just to note, are voice votes. These are all projects that are being funded through surplus money. Normally, it would be a bonding, but it is, we looked at our finances and it was recommended by the county executive's office as well as finance and the department, DPW as well, that to move forward with these projects now and get them started. So I just wanted to make note of that. So we're up to number 24, I believe, correct? Legislators Menuda, Breschah, Benton, and Hines with all Republicans and legislators Luhon and Totell as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Public Works for the Main Street #2 Bridge in the town of Cornwall.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Number 25. Legislators Paduk, Menuda, Benton, and Cheney with all Republicans as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Public Works for County Route 67 East Main Street improvements pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Number 26, please. Legislators Menuda, Benton, and Breschah with all Republicans as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Public Works for highway equipment pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Number 27. Legislators Tui, Ryskevich, Benton, and Paduk with all Republicans and legislator Ramos as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Public Works for asbestos abatement pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Number 28, please. Legislators Menuda, Paduk, Benton, and Breschah with all Republicans as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Public Works for the Surrogates Court parking lot pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried and we move on to number 29. Legislators Tui, Menuda, Benton, and Cheney with all Republicans and legislator Ramos as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Public Works for the Government Center feasibility analysis pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried and we're on to number 30. Legislators Tui, Menuda, Benton, Paduk, and Hines with all Republicans and legislators Luhon, Totell, and Ramos as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Public Works for ADA analysis at various locations pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Number 31. Legislators Tui, Menuda, Benton, and Paduk with all Republicans and legislator Totell as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Parks and Recreation to replace bridges on the Heritage Trail in the towns of Chester, Blooming Grove, and Monroe pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried and we move on to number 32. Legislators Tui, Benton, and Cheney with all Republicans and legislator Totell as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Parks and Recreation for the construction of a new bridge along the Heritage Trail, Segment #1 in the Village of Goshen pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, it's a voice vote as well, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number 33, please. Legislators Benton, Menuda, and Breschah with all Republicans and legislators Luhon and Ramos as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Parks and Recreation to rehabilitate the walls of the Algonquin Upper Dam in the town of Newburgh pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Number 34, please. Legislators Benton, Menuda, and Hines with all Republicans and legislators Luhon and Ramos as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Parks and Recreation to rehabilitate the Algonquin Lower Dam in the town of Newburgh pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments on this one? All right, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Number 35, this is a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote. Legislators Benton, Totell, Paduk, and Menuda with all Republicans as cosponsors. Bond resolution dated August 4, 2022. Bond resolution of the county of Orange, New York, authorizing restroom replacement at Thomas Bull Memorial Park, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $75,000. Appropriating set amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $75,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please. Fagio?
Yes.
Paduk? Emo? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? Nineteen eyes. Thank you. Number 36, and this is also a bond resolution necessitating two-thirds vote. Legislators Tui, Menuda, Benton, and Cheney with all Republicans as cosponsors. Bond resolution dated August 4, 2022. Bond resolution of the county of Orange, New York, authorizing the construction of improvements at various county parks, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $100,000. Appropriating set amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of 100,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please call the roll on this one. Fagio?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tui? Benelli? Nineteen eyes. Madam Chairwoman, and the desk is clear. Nineteen eyes, Madam Chairwoman, and the desk is clear.
Thank you. It's my understanding we have five individuals that signed up to speak after on non-agenda items, so the first speaker is Donna Alago and will be followed by Ruth Chenoweth. Donna? Diana, I'm sorry. And I even have my glasses on. You need to turn the mic on. You're good.
Good afternoon, I hope everyone is well today. My name is Diana Alago. I'm an Orange County resident and volunteer of the Orange County Election Integrity Team. After seeing anomalies in the past few elections, several concerned citizens came together to form New York Citizens Audit. Since the founding, many more have joined to volunteer, contribute and provide different levels of expertise in different areas. Teachers, lawyers, homemakers, information technologies specialists are just a few of the specialty contributions among the citizens who volunteer. There is a group for every one of the 62 counties in New York State. After the 2020 election, the mission of the group was to send FOIA requests for all of the data and then take the time to deeply analyze. We are dedicated to the idea of free and fair elections. Therefore, we are seeking to have the 2020 election decertified due to the enormous amount of data that proves that many things went awry. This is a bipartisan effort and is not about the presidential election. We are, however, alarmed about New York down ballot races where there were at least 111 New York representatives who cannot prove they won the election because the number of irregular votes exceeds the margin of victory. The next alarming item is the number of determined, unique instances of identity theft among other irregular items and broken laws in Orange County. Believe me, we'd rather be in our swimming pools right now, especially since this is a volunteer effort. But this is important because we want to make the necessary changes to drive election integrity. We continue to see the same types of abnormalities in 2021 and 2022. Attorney General Letitia James, along with New York State Board of Elections, Peter Kozinski, Douglas Kellner, Andrew Spanell and Anthony Casal have received a petition containing the analyzed data. County legislators all over New York are receiving this documentation. On July 7th, we presented the data to the Orange County Legislature. The Orange County data, along with the data for the other 61 counties in New York State, is also available online on the Internet at AuditNewYork.com. The packet of data was also hand-delivered to our County Executive, Steve Newhouse, this week. I really hope that each of you has taken the time to review the findings. Today, the New York Citizens Audit has decided to propose a resolution. We are asking the Orange County Legislature to propose our county's election problems and the resolution to the state legislature. Thank you for allowing us to exercise our freedom of speech and providing this information directly to you.
Thank you, Diana. Diana, I just have a quick question for you. In the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned the group, and I didn't catch the name, it was Election.
Oh, it's the Orange County Election Integrity Group.
Okay, thank you. Ruth?
To New York State Attorney General and New York State Board of Elections. Be it resolved by the Orange County Legislature of the State of New York, the members concurring: One, the members of the Orange County Legislature recognize that lawful voters expect that election officials and state legislators will do their sworn duty to ensure that lawful votes of the people as cast are honored and not diluted or debased by acts classified by the New York Legislature as criminal acts. Number two, that in the words of constitutional expert Alexander Hamilton in Federalist 68, nothing was more to be desired than that every practicable obstacle should be opposed to cabal, intrigue and corruption. These most deadly adversaries of Republican government might naturally have been expected to make their approaches from more than one quarter, but chiefly from the desire in foreign powers to gain an improper ascendant in our councils. How could they better gratify this than by raising a creature of their own to the chief magistracy of the Union? But the Convention have guarded against all dangers of this sort with the most prominent and judicial attention. Number three, that when a state legislator exercised this plenary power to determine the manner in which electors are chosen, that power is governed solely by the federal Constitution, the jurisprudence memorialized in Lester versus Garrett, 258 U.S. 130, comma 137, in 1922, which states that functions of state legislator in carrying out a federal function derived from the United States Constitution transcends any limitation sought to be imposed by the people of the state, and that no state constitution, state law or state court can alter or constrain that grant of power.
Thank you, Ruth. Christine McCormick, followed by Patricia Dos.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Christine McCormick, and I will continue reading the resolution. It is the follow-up to the petition that was read into the record on July 7th. I very sincerely hope that you took the time to read the petition and took all of the information to heart, and I'm asking you now to please act on it. Number four, that the appointment of these electors is thus placed absolutely and wholly with the legislatures of the several states, that this power is conferred on the legislatures of the states by the Constitution of the United States and cannot be taken from them or modified by their state constitutions, and that whatever provisions may be made by statute or by the state constitution to choose electors by the people, there is no doubt of the right of the legislature to resume the power at any time, for it can neither be taken away nor abdicated. The jurisprudence memorialized in McPherson versus Blacker, 146 U.S. dot 1, 34 through 35, 1892. Number five, that the legal doctrine extol, male, non-torture action, a right of action cannot arise out of fraud, and that no court will lend its aid to a man who founds his cause of action upon a moral or an illegal act. The maxim lies at the foundation of a general rule of public policy, the rule that the courts will not sustain an action which arises out of the moral turpitude of a plaintiff or out of his violation of general law enacted to carry into effect the public policy of the state or nation. Marshall v. Lowell, 19 F.2D, 751, comma 755, excuse me, Eighth Circuit, Minnesota, 1927. Six, substantial irregularities and violations of New York State Election Law, Section 16, Elections Law are specifically classified as criminal behaviors. Number seven, the significant irregularities associated with the illegal practice commonly known as ballot harvesting, a Class VI felony criminal offense under New York law, and executive orders sending mail-in ballots to all inactive voters registered, affect, I'm sorry, affected mail-in balloting, deceasing and canvassing, and occurred during the November 3rd, 2020 election. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. Patricia? And that's followed by Andreas, I'm not too sure how to pronounce your last name.
Number eight, that there was infringement on the legislator of the New York, of, I'm sorry, of the state of New York's authority pursuant to the United States Constitution under legislation, plenary power and the supremacy clause to regulate elections. Nine, that the selection of presidential electors and other statewide electoral contest results in the state involving federal offices in this dispute. Orange County election facts. Orange County voter rolls maintained by the New York State Board of Elections demonstrate that a 1,173 voter discrepancy existed between the Orange County precinct vote tabulation count and the New York State Board of Elections, and a 1,304 voter discrepancy existed between the Orange County precinct vote tabulation count and the New York Secretary of State certified results. Additionally, a 131 vote discrepancy existed between the New York State Board of Elections and the Secretary of State regarding Orange County. Orange County voter rolls maintained by the New York State Board of Elections demonstrates that there are 6,929 duplicate ID numbers assigned to 106 of those which voted. Orange County voter rolls maintained by the New York State Board of Elections demonstrates that 88% of the voting age population of Orange County is registered to vote. The following age groups from 18 to 100 have an excess of 95% registration. 31, 32, 57, 59, 62, 63, 64, 65, 67, 68, 69, 70, 73. The following age groups from 18 to 100 have excess of 100% registration. 30, 101%, 74, 103%, and 100, 105%. Orange County voter rolls maintained by the New York State Board of Elections demonstrate that 751 people registered after the cutoff date and voted on Election Day. Orange County voter rolls maintained by the New York State Board of Elections demonstrated that two people voted who are recorded in the voter rolls as deceased. Orange County voter rolls maintained by the New York State Board of Elections demonstrated that 488 people voted from eight small homes, 119 people voted from two schools, 118 people voted from two trailer park addresses, and 645 people voted from the apartment building with no apartment numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. And Andrea, and you have beautiful handwriting, except I couldn't understand your last name.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd be grateful for your undivided attention to this matter now and until integrity is restored. Number seven, Orange County voter rolls maintained by the New York State Board of Elections demonstrate that six voters were purged from the rolls prior to November 3rd, 2020, but voted anyway. Number eight, the total number of irregular votes in Orange County as detailed above is 3,539 votes. Number nine, analysis of the voter turnout in Orange County using the Dr. Frank Age Turnout Method reveals a six-factor polynomial constant can predict the voter turnout by age with a 99.9% degree of accuracy. This demonstrates that the turnout records are not organic. Number 10, according to the New York State Secretary of, the New York Secretary of State, on December 8th, 2020, Orange County subtracted 33,153 blank votes from the previously certified total. On June 18th, 2021, Orange County added 36,584 blanks to the previously certified total. Number 10, that based on the clear and convincing nature of the evidence cited in this resolution, there remains an inconsolable controversy that cannot be resolved with the declaration of a clear winner and as such is irredeemably compromised. Number 11, that the members of the Orange Legislature hereby notify the President of the New York State Senate, the Speaker of the New York State Assembly, and the members of Congress from the State of New York that it is justifiable position of the Orange Legislature that we set aside the results of the Orange County elections as irredeemably compromised and, one, reclaim the 2020 presidential election, electors; two, decertify the 2020 federal presidential election; number three, decertify New York State down ballot races where the winner cannot prove they won by a margin in excess of the total irregular registrations and votes in that voting district; number four, a full forensic audit of the 2020 election; and number five, reject electronic voting and move to paper ballots, due to the irredeemably flawed nature of these elections that prevent the declaration of a clear winner of said presidential electors. Thank you very much.
May I ask the ladies that spoke, if you have not turned in the paperwork that you were reading from, could you please do so to the clerk? Okay, I was just notified that they have it, thank you. Thank you. Right. At this point, this concludes our meeting for this afternoon, just motion to close. And we have a second, all in favor? Thank you all very much for attending.